Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight is Monday, December the 4th. This is the work session in public hearing on the boundaries for Royal Oaks Elementary School. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Before I turn this meeting over to Dr. Louder to take the, for the reorganization of the Board of Education, I'd like to acknowledge two of our deputies that are here with us tonight. Deputy Barrett Elwood from Hickory Ridge High School and Deputy Holmes from A.T. Allen and Mary Frances Wall. Thank you both for what you do for us and we really appreciate it of you all being here tonight. With that being said, I'll now turn this meeting over to Dr. Louder for the reorganization of our Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, as Mr. Shoemaker said, it's the time for the school board to reorganize and choose officers. So at this point, I will open the nominations for school board chair.
Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to be considered for that position. It gives an opportunity to have parent on, parent in the leadership role here, here on the board. I'd like to consider.
So, Mr. Walters makes a motion for, Mr. Walter, is that, is that right? Is there a second? Or I guess what? Not a second for that nomination. Are there other nominations for the school board chair?
Dr. Louder, I'd like to make a nomination. Dr. Louder, I'd like to make a nomination for chair. However, before I do, I'd like to share with the board members, staff members, and our teaching team that I've been, I am honored, thankful, and grateful to have worked with you for, as chair for the past three years, and I continue to look forward to our continued work together. And with that, I am very pleased, it's my pleasure now to nominate and make the motion for Ms. Cindy Furtinbaugh to be chair.
Second.
Just a nomination for Mr. Furtinbaugh. Mr. Harrison seconded that.
How did you make the motion that the nomination is closed?
Ms. Carpenter makes a motion that the nominations are closed.
And I'll second that.
Mr. Shoemaker seconds that, so at this point, we have, at this point, we have one nomination and a second for chair. So, Mr. Shaw, at this time, do they go ahead and vote?
Yes.
All right, at this point, then, would the school board please vote, or I guess, all those in favor of Ms. Furtinbaugh as the board chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So that is a five to one, I mean, five oh, I'm sorry. I thankfully get to turn the meeting over to Ms. Furtinbaugh, is that right?
All right.
Five to zero.
Thank you, board members, for your vote of encouragement, support, and as the first act, I will now take nominations for board vice chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Carolyn Carpenter for the position of vice chair.
Second also.
Are there any nominations for vice chair?
Move closed nominations.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. We'll now take the vote, all those in favor of Ms. Carpenter continuing as vice chair. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
I look forward to working with you. Okay, board members, we now need to set the agenda, and I will make note just for our audience, present and on tape, that Mr. Powell will be here shortly. He had a family activity that, and expects to arrive around 6:15. So we'll now set the agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to our existing agenda. I have two agenda items that I'd like to add, so I'd make a motion that we add in position 3 dot 02. I'd like to add the item, Mr. Scott Paget, Mayor of Concord, would like to address the board. The second item that I would like to add to our, our agenda would be in position 6 dot 015. I don't even know if we go to thousands, but, and I would like to add the item, closed session, and Mr. Shaw will provide the technical reading for this particular closed session when we get ready to go into that. All right, so that's my motion.
Do we need to do those separately, or can we just add them both together?
I was wondering if we could do them as one. I tried to do them as one, so it would save some time.
You make a motion as combining both?
Yes.
I will second that.
Okay, board members, all in favor of adding the two items, comments from Mayor Paget as 3.02, and adding a closed session after 6.01, label it 6.015. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Close session is for guidance from attorneys.
Okay, Ms. Monroe, that's a vote of five zero in favor of modifying the agenda. Okay, as the first item, Mayor Paget, we invite you to-
Excuse me, Madam Chair. We now need to, now set the agenda, so I'll make the motion that we now set the amended agenda.
The second?
Second.
Mr. Harrison, second. All in favor of setting the agenda as modified?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and that's accepted, five zero. And now we will invite Mayor Paget to come forward.
I'm here as a citizen and a retired educator, and I know each of you, and I respect the job that you do, and I know that it's not an easy job. You have a lot of things considered when you're talking about attendance districts and certainly a growing population. I've watched your meetings on TV, and I applaud you for your patience and listening, and I know that you have done more hearings than you actually were required to do, and I applaud you for that. I would encourage all of us in this room that feel very passionate about this issue to be respectful of you and the Board of Education and the staff, because you do not have an easy job. I've observed the effect in the community when you close a school. In the early 70s, when I came here, Logan School had just been closed, and there was consolidation when that school was closed, and the elementary school in that district was closed, and people in that community can tell you that the place has never been the same since. Also, in the early 70s, I remember when the city schools merged with the county schools, and Long School was one of the ones that was closed, the place where I was the principal. And I would say that that community has never been the same either after that school closed. I spent almost half of my career as principal of Beverly Hills, and I loved the community school aspect and the parental support, but it wasn't just the parents, it was that whole community that felt ownership of that school, whether they had students there or not. Some people think that because of the name Beverly Hills, that that's a privileged school. It's not. It's not. It's a Title I school. They have a lot of diversity, have had that for years, but that's what makes that school special, because the teachers and the principal and assistants and everybody there works to bring everybody up, just like that's the desire for all the schools. I know that the economics for a larger school are better, and that's what I believe you have been doing when you built new schools. I understand that. But what I'm talking about now is an existing school with strong support. Even as you have listened to people that don't want the school closed, and you've been bombarded with a lot of things, I want to tell you, there's one aspect of this that's really good news if you stop and think about it. When you ride around the city of Concord, and it's not just in the Beverly Hills district, it's all over town, there's signs at churches. The good news is, you've got a lot of people that support that school, that public school, and that makes me proud, and I would think it would make you proud, that you've got that many people interested and supportive of that school. You know, it would really be sad if no one cared, but a lot of people do care. Now, in my opinion, and I know that y'all have studied this issue very carefully and will continue to study it, but in my opinion, even if it would require moving the students from Beverly Hills to another school for a year, if they could come back home to that school or one in that district, I think the parents and the students and the community would support that. They would understand that. And I've got to also, and that's a six decades old school, but I've got to also say the same thing for Aubram McAllister and Colton Webb, that those are existing schools that have very strong support in each of their communities, and trust and support that it really takes years to build. So, that's the end of my comments. Two of my friends, Brian King and Sam Leader, asked me to express their support for keeping this school open in the Beverly Hills site or in the Beverly Hills neighborhood as a viable elementary school. Thank you.
Okay, board members, we're now ready to open the public hearing. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing for input on the Royal Oaks-
I'll make that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, the public hearing is now open. As a reminder, individuals may speak for three minutes, and persons speaking on behalf of the group may speak for five minutes, and we ask you to be just aware of your time, and when it beeps, please either wrap up immediately or very, very quickly, so that we can keep moving. Based on the number of speakers, I believe we're at fifty, 51 it looks like. With, with the transitions between people, we're estimating we can only do 15 to 16 an hour, so therefore, we will schedule breaks since we are at 6:15. In about 90 minutes, at 7:45, so, Mr. Harrison, you can be my timekeeper in case I lose track.
Have you turned my phone off?
So at about 7:45, we will recess briefly for five to 10 minutes, ask you to come back promptly, and then we'll continue with the rest of the speakers at that point. So, at this point, I believe we are ready to start. Is there anything I need, else I need to say, Mr. Shaw? Okay?
7:45?
At 7:45. So there'll be 90 minutes. Okay, our first speaker is Sandoval Mesa.
And Eileen, does this need? Oh, you're speaking for a group, okay, so it's in five minutes. Okay. Thank you. They're gonna pass a picture before I start speaking, please, can you notice? Gracias. I'm gonna start now.
Okay.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre, miembros del board de educación de El Condado de Cabarros. Mi nombre es Sodí Mesa Sandoval, y estoy aquí represent, en representación de la escuela BHS y las familias hispanas. El motivo por el cual estamos aquí es porque nos gustaría que la escuela elementaria no fuera cerrada, porque esto tendría un impacto tanto como económico y social en nuestra comunidad y nuestra escuela. Como BHS son por, son pequeñas y son más relevantes, por lo menos eso es lo que creemos en la escuela. Entiendo esta viejita, esta viejita, y necesita algunas reparaciones, pero creemos que con una sola vez que se repare, que costaría un promedio de diez millones de dólares, se haría una sola vez, y se mantendría todo el tiempo. Creemos que son escuelas pequeñas, pero son relevantes, sirven todavía. Uh-oh. I forgot that you don't understand Spanish, right? What, why do I bring this to you guys? Because I feel the same way. How many people in Spanish, or Hispanic peoples in here?
One, two, three, four.
What is the other one? Do you, do you guys went through our process and asked them that there's a boundary, or there's a closing? Are we closing the school or boundaries? Because from what I understand, my poor English, the boundary is, is meaning that you guys are closing Beverly Hills. Guess what? I passed a picture in there, that is my daughter, you don't know her, of course. We went to the 5K, to run a shadow race, and guess what? Beverly Hills won the first place, and I was so happy, because last year they won, this year they won, but I am sad in the meantime, because next year Beverly Hills is not gonna go to it, because it's not gonna exist anymore. My son with you guys.
Hi, everyone, members of the school board. I would like to thank you for letting me speak and address my concerns on behalf of closing Beverly Hills Elementary School. As you see, I have to bring my own translator, because like I said in the last meeting, Cabarrus County Schools by law have to provide me with a translator, therefore, I have to bring my own. I was here November 20th when Ms. Lynn Reimer announced the recommendations, which she went from scenario A to F. I was very happy to hear that two more scenarios were created. The last one, our favor, not to close BHS, but guess what? The happiness ended soon when she announced that scenario E is being proposed. You guys can go through all the alphabet letters creating scenarios. At the end, you guys are like playing chess with us, only in between the king, queen, bishops, knights, and rooks, and we are the pawn, in which our power is very limited. I also want to mention that all of you guys were elected through the community or by the people, and all of you guys work for the people and the taxpayers. There will be a time where many of you guys want to be reelected. I am not a U.S. citizen, well, I am, but, I want, I want to make sure, because my mom, she can vote. I, when I tell her to, she's going-
No cambies nada.
I will take this issue into consideration, because my voice will be heard through hers. I guess I don't know the importance of this matter, but by now, I have become a shadow for you. Also, from what I understand, none of you live by the Beverly Hills community, but I'm sure that if any of you were living in our community, you'd have second thoughts about this. I'm here for my 10-year-old daughter, because her voice cannot be her, but I think I can speak for her, because most of the time, when kids want to speak, their rights get trampled. At this point, I don't care about the taxes we pay or the economy of the city. My priority is the well-being of my daughter. I am a father of two children, and since they could learn and listen, I taught them that no one can take away the right that we all have, and that is the right of speech, the First Amendment. Members of the board, I ask that if any of you still have children or grandchildren, that you put yourself in the place of the children right now in the school, innocent and not knowing what is about to happen, or as the parents, knowing that since this school is gonna shut down, and one of the best schools, knowing it's unfair. Last thing I have to say is that I would like to mention that in the last meeting, you have mentioned that you are to build another elementary school, but I ask you to please do not commit the same mistake you've done before. Retink this vote and keep BHS.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Our next speaker is Jace Thomas.
Good evening. You, the members of the board, are our voice, our representation as taxpayers, community members, and parents. We need you to be our voice as it relates to the recommendation of scenario E, and in this case, we need you to say no to scenario E. This scenario was added late in the process, and it seems to be essentially a duplication of scenario D, but adjustments were made to it, because in somebody's mind, those adjustments made good sense. I'm asking you to make a decision also that makes good sense. I'm asking to say no to scenario E, so that it will benefit our communities, the city of Concord, and Cabarrus County as a whole. I believe the method that was used to determine the best scenario is flawed and inherently biased. We were told that the data, that the data indicated that the best scenario, that the data indicated the best scenarios for the objectives that needed to be met. If in fact, that data was collected was simply how the members of the committee ranked certain objectives, then the data is also biased. Many members of the committee were also representatives of the schools that would be affected. Naturally, opinions and rankings, rankings would be made based on the well-being of the schools that they, that they represent. That's not necessarily intentional, it's just human nature, it's the way we all are. Additionally, what the method and data fail to consider is the effect that closing Beverly Hills School will have on the area just north of downtown. No one in the county should want to see urban decay creep in and a community become economically depressed. The biggest question for me is, why does Royal Oaks need to be near capacity its first year? Is it someone's agenda to make, make sure of that? And if so, any effort to rush to fill that school would be reactionary. Please don't prematurely react and close a well-functioning school to respond to a new challenge. Keep the long-term benefit of the students and communities in mind. I ask again, please vote, please do not vote to close Beverly Hills, at least not yet. Give appropriate time for, for several things. Number one, give time to see what the demand is for the arts magnet over the next few years. Number two, give time to see what the growth will be in the western part of the county. I just can't imagine that it's physically responsible to close a school, any school, when more seats are expected to be needed and schools to be built. Give time to allow all the construction on 8529 and Lake Concord Road to be finished before deciding to move a whole student body on the, to the other side of that construction zone. And finally, give time to do a study that is not flawed and inherently biased. It would be, it would be wise to delay, to the, to delay the decision to close Beverly Hills for the next few years. Please represent the best interest of the whole community and vote no on scenario E. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I am here tonight as a mother of three daughters that attend Beverly Hills STEM School. I am here as a professional in a STEM career, and I'm here as a pediatric cardiologist, and I serve the children of Cabarrus County. The following letter is addressed to you, Dr. Louder, and to the Cabarrus County School Board. This letter has been signed by more than 60 physicians that serve Cabarrus County. This letter is signed by physicians advocating for Beverly Hills STEM School. I'd like to read some excerpts from that letter now. We are signing this letter as concerned physicians of Cabarrus County. Beverly Hills Elementary School is a valuable resource to our community, and we want to support our school. Given the school's proximity to the hospital and the other medical practices, there is a rich history shared by Beverly Hills and our medical community. Many of us purchased our homes specifically so that our children may attend Beverly Hills. We understand that due to budgetary concerns, Beverly Hills Elementary may be closed at the end of this academic year. As parents, physicians, and citizens of this city, we feel that other options exist and that Beverly Hills should remain open. Beverly Hills STEM has successfully embraced the STEM program with incredible gains due to the dedicated staff, innovative programs, and support from the community. We are an invaluable community partner for the STEM program at Beverly Hills, and our relationship with the school has never been stronger or more meaningful in the community of Concord. Sincerely, physicians advocating for Beverly Hills. Beverly Hills STEM School is the closest of all available schools to the hospital. This gives me the opportunity to be an involved parent with the PTO, offer assistance in the classroom, participation in science limpiead, and teaching of cardiac anatomy in the classroom, just to list a few. Participation of healthcare professionals in Beverly Hills STEM School is incredibly valuable. Our ability to be involved in Beverly Hills STEM is due in large part to the proximity of the school to our medical community. I grew up in a small town in Georgia. I was inspired to become a physician in the fifth grade by my neighborhood public school. My small neighborhood public elementary school inspired in me a lifelong love of learning. I want the same for my own children and for the other children in Cabarrus County. According to the U.S. Department of Commerce, STEM occupations are growing at 17% per year. STEM degree holders have a higher income than non-STEM degrees. STEM workers play a key role in sustained growth and stability of the U.S. economy. Most jobs of the future will require a solid understanding of math and science. Beverly Hills STEM currently has more than 400 children enrolled in the STEM program. It is my understanding that not all these children have enrolled for STEM for the next academic year. The reasons for this are multifactorial. For those of us that have Beverly Hills as our homeschool, we're not even required to fill out the program choice for STEM. We already have enrolled in the STEM program in the school, which includes at least 300 of the children that currently go to school there. It's only required for children that live outside the district and are seeking a STEM school. Additionally, there are barriers with competing the program choice online. I am comfortable with computers, and I found navigating the program choice very difficult. Also, around the same time the program choice opened, it was announced that Beverly Hills, Hills STEM School may close. This has resulted in significant chaos and confusion for us as parents. Essentially, I believe that you are substantially underestimating the number of children that are eagerly hoping for a STEM education. I believe that closing small neighborhood schools like Beverly Hills can have very negative ramifications for the public health of the children of Cabarrus County. There is 40 years of data that indicate that students in smaller schools have higher attendance, fewer dropouts, fewer incidences, excuse me, of discipline and violence, higher levels of extracurricular participation and parental involvement. Children with shorter commutes to school have more time available for after-school studies, physical activity, and a good night's sleep. This data tells us that students need to feel a sense of belonging to their school community. They need to feel that they are known and that they matter, as opposed to members of just a nameless herd. Finally, I would like to say a few words about Royal Oaks. The citizens of our county are spending 25-plus million dollars for a state-of-the-art facility, and Royal Oaks will be the first art magnet program in our county. This should be a great time of celebration. Closing our beloved Beverly Hills Elementary School to fill seats at Royal Oaks is a terrible way to market the reopening of a school. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am shocked by the recommendation of scenario E. It's supposed to minimize neighborhood disruption, but in the case of Beverly Hills School, it maximizes the destruction of an established neighborhood. I'm concerned that we are observing planned obsolescence by closing Beverly Hills School. Apparently, we've built a school that has become less desirable over time. It's very wasteful to disregard the richness and history of our neighborhood school. It has served Concord for generations. Closing it will alter the lives of hundreds of families and teachers by displacing them and unleashing chaos. We need stability and continuity more than continuous upheaval. Honestly, do you support children getting up in the middle of the night and waiting for the school bus in the dark? That's no good. It's a safety risk. I encourage you to adopt the mindset of my father, former superintendent J. N. Freeze. He had one rule of thumb he always tried to keep in perspective, and I quote, "The schools belong to the people, and they are going to be what the people wish them to be." The people wish to save Beverly Hills School. The renovation or rebuilding will have a positive influence on the neighboring community. Savings and transportation costs will benefit family budgets as well as the school budget. Children can keep walking to school and develop closer relationships with their friends. In case of emergency or school lockdown, parents can get to their children faster. I respect the hard work of the committee. I extend my compliments to Deputy Superintendent Lynn Reimer for her leadership role and for answering my individual questions very politely. But what if the committee had included a larger representation of all the stakeholders, such as neighbors, local businesses, regional planners, government officials- such as neighbors, local businesses, regional planners, government officials, along with the educators? The four basic steps of the Katner-Trego Decision Matrix may have reached a different conclusion. At the very least, those affected would feel that their reactions and opinions are being evaluated. Many factors other than education should enter into the process when a school closes. Be strong. Slow down. Hear the outcries and the wishes of the people. Rethink your position. You are entrusted with the education and safety of our children. Be mindful of their emotional needs as well as good stewards of older facilities. Care for our school properties. Lead and have the integrity to make the sacrifices to keep our schools open. Reject E, select F, and invest in our children because they're worth the investment.
Good evening. You have before you a scenario that is unprecedented in the recent history of this county. You are considering the intentional reduction of the capacity of our public taxpayer-funded school system. Our school system needs these seats. Why do you simultaneously reduce seats and ask for more? Other school systems are trying to create what we already have. People see the beauty and desirability. This is a choice we made. Close our school and take away our choice. I believe there is a place for small neighborhood schools, just as there is a place for large suburban schools. We understand you cannot continue to build schools for four hundred students anymore, but we do believe you should invest in and maintain the ones you have. Come visit us, and you will see why we are so passionate about our school. Our school is one where children are known by their name, their siblings, their families, their talents, and their challenges. They are even known by Mrs. Johnson by the types of books they like to read. They are known by Nurse Pam by the things that give them anxiety, the source of tummy aches, their blood sugars, and yes, it is possible in our small school for Nurse Pam to know them by how many loose teeth they have. If you truly have the best interest of our children in mind, you would consult less with construction managers and more with teachers, social workers, principals, and parents. Ask more questions. Allow them to speak freely about what they feel is best for our children. The staff at each school is uniquely qualified to address the issues that affect their student body. They are professional and open-minded. Talk to them, it would be very productive. In closing, I ask you to reject this recommendation. I do not feel the objectives set forth by this committee were able to fully capture the full effect of a school closure on this community. We established our objectives prior to the committee realizing that the intent was to close a school. In my opinion, the process was flawed. The usual method of redistricting was not adequate to handle a consolidation. This committee of primarily school employees have more than enough expertise to handle a redistricting, but this was different. This was much larger. At the very least, a larger cross-section of stakeholders and community leaders should have been a part of this. This could have been a transparent process and a win-win for everyone. Thank you.
Hey.
Good evening.
Hello, everyone. My name is Thomas Probst, and I, along with all of my family, have called Concord home for many years. I know that you all are faced with a difficult vote on December eleventh, and that outcome will have a very large impact on many families. In preparing for this speech tonight, I went back and reviewed Scenario E, which was recommended by the superintendent at that November twentieth meeting. This scenario sends seventy-one of the Royal Oaks students to Urban and twenty-eight of the Royal Oaks students to Mount Pleasant. We are being told that the objective is to fill seats at Royal Oaks, but I can't figure out why it makes sense to move children that already attend Royal Oaks to other schools. Scenario E puts more SES students with an even higher SES population. That's not balancing socioeconomic status. The families that are able will adjust and find other options, only driving the percentage of SES higher in the school. The logical boundary for Beverly Hills Elementary shouldn't involve crossing over Highway twenty-nine and I-85. Rather, this seems like a logical boundary for our children and our families to avoid on a daily commute to school. Our neighborhood schools are a vital component to our children's development, home values, and areas around downtown Concord. I am asking you all to please consider reinvesting in our downtown neighborhoods by not closing the neighborhood schools. Downtown Concord is currently being revitalized and many projects are underway. We need your support to keep the heart of our community alive and well. Mecklenburg County just passed a bond that nearly one billion dollars, and some of that bond money is to be used to reinvest in their neighborhood schools. Please don't make us all go down this mega-school path for ten years only to figure out that we made a mistake by going big across the board. Please don't take away our seats in a county where demand for schools has never been greater, and please don't vote to close Beverly Hills Elementary School. Thank you, guys.
Yes.
Good evening. Elaine, are you speaking for a group?
Yes.
Okay, so five minutes?
It won't be five minutes, but...
Okay. Okay. You may begin.
Good evening. My name's Wendy Harrison. You all know that I've put many years of blood and sweat and tears into Royal Oaks Elementary. However, I do oppose the closing of Beverly Hills STEM Elementary. The last time I spoke here was January eleventh, twenty sixteen. That evening, I spoke out about the redistricting of my area permanently to Mount Pleasant Elementary and Middleland High School due to the new construction of Royal Oaks. At that time, I brought to you a petition of forty-three people from my area. Old Concord-Sawsbury Road and South Road signed that we did not want our area redistricted to Mount Pleasant. During that meeting, there was unanimous vote by the board to move our area temporarily to Mount Pleasant, only during the construction of Royal Oaks. This was the same night that the board approved R. Brown and Beverly Hills as STEM schools. It was going to be a hardship due to my job location to have one child sent to Mount Pleasant and one close by at Concord Middle. At the end of that meeting, I felt very lost and not sure of what to do, but many teachers, parents, and administration from Beverly Hills came to me with open arms and said, "Come to our new STEM school. We would love to have you and your family." I loved excellent teachers and staff at Royal Oaks, although I was quite sad to be leaving them, but knew that it was the right thing to do for my family. My youngest has done extremely well at Beverly Hills STEM School, where she is a member of the VEX team and has made many new friends. She only has one more year left in elementary school, and it appears she will be moved once again. Redistricting is not new to us. My sister and I were part of the Dr. Freeze redistricting of nineteen eighty-three, and we still both live on the same road we grew up on, we even our neighbors. Here's the deal. Prior to nineteen eighty-three redistricting, our road, South Road, was Royal Oaks, Northwest Middle, and Northwest High. We used to joke and say we had to pack lunch to get to Northwest. My sister was at Northwest High, so she was allowed to stay and graduate from Northwest and still had school transportation for those three years. On the other hand, I was at Royal Oaks and finished Royal Oaks and went to Concord Middle and Concord High. My family was thrilled because it was three to four miles down the road, and Northwest was thirteen. Our area has remained Royal Oaks District ever since, even when Urban was built closer. Now they want to move my area once again to Mount Pleasant, which would put us back to being eleven miles away from school. In closing, let me make a good analogy, since I'm a nurse, to my profession. I have thirty thousand patients that have the same procedure. Ninety-nine percent will go home and do fine after their procedure, but the one percent that has a severe life-threatening complication will need immediate attention and care to save their lives. Therefore, it is our responsibility, your responsibility as a board, to save the one percent so that we can save our schools. Beverly Hills would be the first school closed since school integration, and I don't think this board wants to be known for closing the first school in Cabarrus County. Thank you.
Mr. Phillips, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. First of all, I know you have a tough job. I sat on City Council for twenty years and endured many public hearings. I know what it takes to sit there and go through all this, so thank you for providing this opportunity and this additional hearing. I would say, first of all, that I don't have children and never have, so you may ask yourself, "Why are you interested in this issue?" The simple answer is because I'm a product of Beverly Hills School. I started at Beverly Hills in nineteen fifty-six in the first grade and went through the first six years there, and it was a wonderful time in my life, and I remember it very clearly at age sixty-seven. So what I would like to do is ask you to really think carefully about this, and I'm sure you will. I received a good, basic education at Beverly Hills School that served me well. People evaluate what degree success they've had in life as they get older. I feel very fortunate to have had the opportunities I had, and I think a lot of that goes back to the basic education I had at Beverly Hills. I think Beverly Hills has continued to provide that type of education all these years later. So in closing, what I would say to you is, I know that you're elected to be a leader. I think you all take that position seriously. I respect and appreciate that from you. And it's easy to make decisions sometimes based on purely numbers and what the economics say. It's not always easy to make decisions that are in the best interest of everybody concerned that may cost more. One of the lessons I learned from my mentor Alfred M. Brown, Sr., when I first came on City Council, was that you always vote to do the right thing, not always the most economical thing. And I learned that lesson well, and we always looked at the money, we always looked at the bottom line, but we didn't always go with the least-cost alternative. And I would ask you to just think of all the factors involved here tonight, all the people who are here tonight, and all the people you already heard previously, and please vote to keep Beverly Hills School open. Thank you.
Next, we have Mrs. Ada Kendrick. And just for reference, if you have things to pass out, if you want to start with Ms. Monroe while even the prior speaker is speaking, we can pass them down more quickly. I don't want to have to take up your time. Are we ready?
Hi, my name is Ada Kendrick, and I am the current PTO president at Beverly Hills and have been the last four years. I'm speaking on behalf of that group. We appreciate your service on the board and are pleased to be able to speak tonight. We have a very involved PTO and a large following of parent and staff volunteers, whom schools affected in these scenarios are trying to model after. You have threatened this team now by possibly closing BHE. We also have a large group of physicians, which you've heard from already. They chose this specific neighborhood based on the proximity of the school, home, and hospital, so they may choose to spend a few extra moments with their child at lunchtime, or the ability to take their child to school and still make it to work on time. The hospital needs schools and neighborhoods like ours in order to recruit the excellent physicians that we now have. Please remember this if you decide to vote with Dr. Lauter's recommendation next week. I listened to Dr. Lauter make his recommendation to choose Scenario E on November twentieth, closing and splitting Beverly Hills. Sorry. I attended the last few meetings. I didn't speak. Instead, I listened. I listened to a gentleman ask you to close our old failing school so you didn't have to rip off the Band-Aid later down the road, so his children and a handful of others won't be affected. I listened to a parent ask you to close our school and for BHE to learn to embrace change and teach our children to learn from adversity. In the last five years, we've had three principals, two assistant principals, several curriculum changes, changes in our grading system, and abrupt changes in staffing close to the start of the school year. I see we've had our share of adversity and change, and our students still manage to expel... excel, I'm sorry. I listened to a mother speak of how she wanted to continue to be PTO president and take her school to new levels. Luckily, she'll be able to do so. Her school is not in danger of closing. This is not a competition, but no one has more to lose here than our four hundred and twenty-six children and the neighborhood that thrives from it. We have a very involved PTO... I'm sorry, I'm not going to read that again. The hospital needs schools and neighborhoods like ours in order to recruit the excellent physicians that we now have. I listened to Dr. Lauter make his recommendation to choose Scenario E on November twentieth, closing and splitting Beverly Hills. A few of you asked Ms. Reimer about the scenario, and I heard your concerns for our kids and our community. I heard you ask about our STEM program and program choice. I heard you say you've seen our signs all over the area and all over the parade floats. The community outcry speaks volumes. I also heard Ms. Reimer tell you they promised a STEM program but not a facility to house it. Didn't they promise two facilities when we went STEM with our sister school, R. Brown-McAllister in two thousand fifteen? We have a facility. It's called Beverly Hills STEM Elementary, and we've earned a forty-four thousand dollar grant recently. Please don't discount that. Ms. Reimer stated on November twentieth that only one hundred and fifty signed up for our STEM program. Her enrollment numbers are misleading. All her scenarios report we have three hundred and eighty-seven students. We currently have four hundred and twenty-six. Our numbers continue to grow with our STEM program. We may have an established community, but we are still growing within our unchanged boundary lines. Since two thousand and fifteen, BHE has had a twenty-eight percent increase in enrollment. Going back to two thousand, our enrollment has remained consistent from the high three-hundreds to low four-hundreds, exceeding our max capacity of three ninety-seven for nine years total. We have four hundred and twenty-six students, yet only one hundred and fifty-eight signed up for STEM. Sixty-five fifth graders are moving to sixth grade. They should not be counted in our numbers. We should also consider our Title I status. Last year, seventy percent of our children are at free or reduced lunch. That's two hundred and ninety-eight children. In short, we have one hundred and twenty-eight that do not receive free or reduced lunch and one hundred and fifty-eight signed up for STEM next year. There's a few more reasons why I can see why parents may not have signed up. BHES has a higher-than-state average of Hispanic families. The average is twenty-six percent. CCS average is eighteen, so we have one hundred and eleven Hispanic families. Was their assistance offered to help parents with limited English fill out the online application? We also have a higher-than-average state SES. Was it considered these families may not have computers or internet access to fill out the application? Was there a paper application available? PTO set out Chromebooks at school functions in order to assist. What did the Board of Education do to help? Also, have you looked at the application online? It's very difficult to maneuver. I and a handful of friends with fairly educated backgrounds in various degrees still had to email Bridget Jones and ask if we'd done it correctly. We are asking you to please keep Beverly Hills open and invite you to come up with a better option. Please vote against Dr. Lauter's recommendation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Burpo, and I'm here in support of keeping Beverly Hills open. One of the reasons that I'm standing up here this evening is it's pretty simple, and the words mistrust have been floated around, and I know that upsets some people. But sometimes you can't help how you feel based on how you've been treated. And the reason there's been mistrust, and we feel like we've been misled, is for two very simple questions that have been asked in meetings, in emails, and in person. And those questions are, was Royal Oaks Elementary School built for growth when it was initially decided to build it at six hundred and fifty seats, or was it built to consolidate But sometimes you can't help how you feel based on how you've been treated. And the reason there's been mistrust, and we feel like we've been misled, is for two very simple questions that have been asked in meetings, in emails, and in person. And those questions are, was Royal Oaks Elementary School built for growth when it was initially decided to build it at 650 seats? Or was it built to consolidate Beverly Hills Elementary School from day one? Very simple questions, and nobody has been able to give us the answers. And there's been a lot of talk about data. Follow the data. It makes sense. It's logical. Well, I've looked at some data, and the only data I have is from a Davis demographic report from May 31, 2017. And I understand that's very recently. Royal Oaks has already been built. But this data is going to be very similar to a report that we can't seem to get our hands on from 2015 and 2016 on the demographic study. So, Davis Demographics, in their report in 2017, says, "Overcapacity has been an emerging issue in 3-grade configurations in Cabarrus County schools due to growth currently driven by residential development. Elementary schools will have the greatest gain in 2021, upper close to 400 students from the previous forecasted 2020 year. Seven in 19 elementary schools are currently operating over capacity. More campuses are expected to face this issue due to the district-wide projected growth. Schools located in the Northwest region will experience the biggest growth in K-5 student population, increasing by about 1,200 students in total. Odell, 514; Cox Mill, 211; Bogart, 362; and Colfer, 155." However, the schools located in the North Central region are projected to experience a decline. The schools are Wyncroft, Royal Oaks by 46, and Coltrane Webb by 19. The whole region will have more than 1,200 K-5 students, or about 30% growth by the end of this 10-year projection. There's only one problem. Despite the district-wide projected growth, the Northeast and North Central region are expected to see net decrease by the end of 2026. And I'm running out of time, but that's the same area where the discussion was had to build Royal Oaks 650 seats. And you knew it all along. Someone knew it all along.
Should it say five?
You can go ahead.
Should it say five minutes? I'm speaking for a group.
No, we haven't marked as an individual. I'm sorry? Yeah. Are you representing a specific group?
Mm-hmm.
And what's the group?
The Save Our Schools group.
I believe Mr. Schuman has identified that he's representing that group. Mr. Shaw? We don't usually have multiple per group, do we?
It's five minutes for one person.
Right. Representing the same group, yes. So, you're on the list as an individual.
Okay. Then I'll cut it down. Okay, thank you. I am speaking to ask you to vote against any proposal that will close Beverly Hills, R. Brown, or Coltrane Webb. These schools are the hearts of their communities, and closing them is a disinvestment in the neighborhoods that have attracted and continue to attract countless professionals and young families to our area. I realize that you may be concerned about fiscal responsibility. However, according to reports, we've obtained Beverly Hills needs approximately $10.6 million in renovations, and we can infer that the three neighborhood schools combined need about $30 million total. The county spent $24 million on the new Royal Oaks Elementary School with a capacity of 650 students. Our three schools house 1,200 students, and so for $6 million more, the county will net nearly double the seats. And you could use the funds that you're going after to find a site and build a new school to combine R. Brown and Coltrane Webb, which would be $24 million for the building, plus who knows how much for the land to fix up our three schools. And then you'll think you might need to have three times the staff, which is not fiscally responsible, but that's not exactly correct. Odell K-5 students are housed in two separate buildings more than a mile apart with separate facilities and staff. Odell has 68 classroom teachers. Our three school combined has 56, which is 12 fewer, according to the Department of Public Instruction. A classroom teacher's minimum salary is $35,000 a year. Times 12 is $420,000 that you're not paying just for classroom teachers at our three schools. That doesn't even account for the additional support staff required to operate large facilities, janitors, teacher assistants, office staff, cafeteria, encore teachers, and so on, because while there may be more resources available at larger schools, those additional resources come at a price, and they are still shared amongst hundreds of children. I understand that some of you may have concerned about the lack of academic growth at Beverly Hills. We just became a STEM school for 2016-17, and students may not perform as well after implementing a new program. As noted by Dr. Lauter in the July 10, 2017 meeting, when discussing the year-round program at Wolf Meadow and their lack of growth, he cautioned against basing a decision on one year of data and suggested waiting at least two years. And Dr. Kelly Poste also stated that reform methods typically take two to three years to show growth, which is evident if you look at Coltrane Webb. It was a priority school in 2010 to 11, and then it became our county's first STEM, and it took it until 2015 to 16 to start to exceed growth expectations. I'm out of time, but I'll email this to you guys. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Now, we have Michael Burpo.
Oh, no.
You've got to change. We switched Speaker 25.
I still need to say this.
I'm sorry, you've switched what?
Speaker 25 or Speaker 12.
Okay, so Taz Kegel?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you see him? Do you need to stand on the chair?
No.
Do you want to perhaps kneel on that chair?
I don't know if that would make you any higher. We certainly don't want you to stand on it.
I think we can sit.
Okay. Oh, that's a little bit better.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Taz Kegel. I am currently a 5th grade student at Beverly Hills Elementary School. I think we should keep Beverly Hills open because it is a super school. It is a super school because of many different things. One of the reasons is that it is a STEM school. STEM is a great program that started with Beverly Hills just last year. STEM stands for science, technology, engineering, and math. I personally love STEM, and lots of my friends love STEM, too. I love STEM because I think I learned better with STEM. Royal Oaks Elementary is not a STEM school. It is an arts school. To continue the STEM program, they would have to go to Wyncroft Elementary. If they went there, they would not have a bus, so they would have to get their parents to drive them there. Another reason they should keep Beverly Hills open is because our school is made up of students who are close to each other. For example, I help out in kindergarten with their morning work, so I get to know them very well. Recently, I also helped out with the kindergarten field trip. Thank you for listening to me. I hope you understand why I think we should keep Beverly Hills Elementary School open.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. All right. As she said, my name is Kayna McGee, and I am part of the staff at Royal Oaks Elementary. And this summer, our principal was given a list of students who live currently in our district but have withdrawn and chosen to go to another school. And the office staff, including myself, used that list to personally make phone calls to those families, check in on them, invite them to come back, invite them to our new arts program, explain what it was going to be about. And the overwhelming response that we got from most families was, we're just waiting for you to come back. We just had to do what was convenient for now. And they were so excited to be able to come home when we do return. Of course, there's also those families that have endured this transition time with us and have stayed with us and are there at Bogart enjoying the arts program as of right now. Now, we see that the currently recommended plan, these same families that I told and gave my word, and I'm a person of integrity, as are all of you, I give them my word that we're coming back in their neighborhood and they can come be a part of the arts program. And if this program, or if this scenario is chosen, they're going to be redistricted to Irvin. And as it has been said before, it seems like we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. You're getting rid of 71 Royal Oaks students and families in order to make room for other future Royal Oaks students and families that are going to be coming from somewhere that they're fighting to keep. So, we want these families to be Royal Oaks students. They may not want to, or probably are not able, to do the magnet program and provide their own transportation. The section that you have put into Irvin, according to the scenario that's been suggested, are our homeowners. These are our working families, and they want to be Royal Oaks students, not magnet program students. They want to be at Royal Oaks because Royal Oaks is their home. I've seen this arts integration program firsthand. It is phenomenal, and I have no doubt that whoever gets to be a part of it, students, teachers, parents, they're going to be blown away. They're going to have an excellent education, an excellent experience. And it's been said throughout this entire process that whoever comes to Royal Oaks, we will welcome with open arms, and that could not be truer. But when it comes down to it, this is home for some people already, just like Beverly Hills is home to Beverly Hills. So, it really makes no sense to me to take people that currently want to be there and replace them with people that you're uprooting from their home. This leads me to ask the very serious question that thankfully has been asked in some forms tonight already, and that is, is the true objective of all this redistricting to give us a chance to open this brand-new school of the arts and fill it and work at the best capacity and set us up for success as Royal Oaks? Or is it to close Beverly Hills? Because that's not fair to either school. And I think you'll find that if you make the correct decision, the right decision, it will not be a plan that involves taking away our current Royal Oaks family. Thank you.
Good evening. I oppose the current recommended scenario that closes Beverly Hills Elementary School. On behalf of the community, I want to thank each of the school board members for your many hours invested in thoughtful consideration of the issues at hand. Please note that the criticism that you're hearing this evening isn't directed at you but rather intended to bring to your attention the flaws in both the process and data on which you are expected to render a decision. We are extremely frustrated by what we perceive as a lack of transparency by school system administration. Let's start with the fact that this entire process, from its inception, has been termed the Royal Oaks Boundary Discussion. It's extremely misleading, not just for Beverly Hills parents but for parents around the county, because it creates the impression that it's about Royal Oaks, which is not a lie, but it's not the whole truth either because other schools are impacted. Why is everyone scared to say the name Beverly Hills? Other conflicts. At the information session on October 16th, we were told that the system needed to, quote, "develop a feeder zone for the new Royal Oaks," that it's hard to spend $30 million of taxpayer money and not increase capacity of the school, and we can't open the school half-empty. So, if putting students in the seats at Royal Oaks truly is a top priority, then why does the recommended scenario move 99 students currently assigned to Royal Oaks away from Royal Oaks? That is counterproductive to what was represented to us as the goal. We were also repeatedly told at that meeting, again quoting, that no decision had been made to close Beverly Hills, but the administration's agenda became very evident during that session as questions or points made by parents related to keeping Beverly Hills open were met with swift counterpoint intended to shut down any resistance, which is frustrating to parents who are just trying to figure out and understand what's going on. Excuse me. Then the process was turned over to the committee to conduct an allegedly unbiased review of the various data points to develop the recommendation. The October 2nd presentation to the board regarding the boundaries as found on the Cabarrus County Schools website does identify the committee members. 35 members total. Five are listed as parents, and 30 are identified as employees of the Cabarrus County Schools. I'm just saying, is that supposed to be unbiased? Because if the senior leadership at the organization where I am employed formed a similarly weighted committee, there's no doubt that our CEO's agenda, however flawed, would be supported because we like our jobs and our paychecks. Please consider the fact that the proposed recommendation is potentially flawed by this bias and other agendas. There's just something about the entire process that has felt very secretive, and we can't really help but think that there's something else going on. Is there something so detrimentally defunct about Beverly Hills that it's unfit for students? Because they were there today. They were there today. So, if there is something else going on, it's time for some transparency and open communication so we, as a collective community, can come together and create viable solutions instead of using our children as tokens in a shell game. Thank you for your consideration.
Now, is this Miss Anna Maria Schuman?
Hi, my name is Ani Schuman, and I am a 3rd grader at Beverly Hills. Dear Board of Education members, three years ago, my sister showed me and told me about Beverly Hills Elementary. My sister Julia is in 7th grade now, but she loved her time at Beverly Hills. We went to Beverly Hills together when I was in kindergarten and 1st grade. We would walk to and from school, and my dad would meet us at the corner, and I would love to do the same for my little brother. I love walking to school now, and I would really miss that if you close my school. When I was in kindergarten, my teacher, Ms. Wilson, passed away. We made a garden in memory of her. What are you going to do with the garden if you close our school? And why can't we keep it where it is? This year, I have friends that I like to talk to and play with. If you do decide that Beverly Hills Elementary will close, I don't know what school they will be going to. I will miss going to school with them. Every day when I go to school, I feel like I am safe and around people that are nice and kind to me. The teachers have been teaching me how to be respectful, responsible, and safe. I learned how to read and write because of the teachers at Beverly Hills. I love my teachers, and I want to always see them at my school. This school is a very big part of a lot of my relationships, and I don't want to lose those relationships with friends and teachers. I also go to after-school programs some, too. We do activities and crafts, and it is so much fun. The Kids Plus teachers are awesome, and I love them so much. I want them to stay at my school, too. My mom and dad know them, and they will even watch out for me if my parents are late picking me up from Kids Plus. I think our school is great, but I hear about some people saying it is old. Well, my dad is old, and he's awesome. I don't think old things are bad. I think they should be cherished and loved. Please keep our school. We love it so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We always enjoy hearing from the students.
Well, that's hard to follow up.
Yeah. Mr. Lee Schuman?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're representing Save Our Schools?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Good evening, good evening, Board, Dr. Lauter, and our citizens in Concord that have come here tonight. I want to thank the Board for not just hearing us tonight but truly listening to your constituents. I was disappointed to hear the recommendation by the staff that recommended closing Beverly Hills Elementary School. Prior to voting on December 11th, I hope that you'll review all of the concerns expressed by all of the Beverly Hills parents, neighbors, and other community members tonight, and some of our leaders from the community as well. We are not here to express emotional sentiments, although those are many. We're wanting you to review the facts, not subjective data or conjecture, in rendering your decision. I'm hopeful that, given your proven track record of being advocates for children and their communities, you'll understand what closing Beverly Hills Elementary School is just not the right thing to do for our kids, for our neighborhood, and for, more importantly, our greater community at large. We have received resounding community support from all over Cabarrus County to our petition to keep Beverly Hills open. That petition has hundreds of comments. It's in front of you now. You'll see the petition from the physicians that Amanda Cook talked about previously. The comments are very important. I think you should read them. They're from people that have passed and present, people that are no longer living in Concord in some cases, that feel still so strongly about the Beverly Hills community and what it means to the current folks that live there now. I'm sure you've seen the yard signs and the signs on parade floats and evidence of the widespread Growing Grassroots Campaign, and it's even exceeded our own expectations. This has become a countywide issue now. This has become a county-wide issue now, and we are in this fight to keep community elementary schools as part of our educational fabric. What is upsetting to all of us is that we voted for a bond to replace Royal Oaks only. That's what the ballot had told us. I understand that things have changed since then, and we have new Board of Education members, new superintendent, new staffing construction management, et cetera, but that is what we voted on. We did not vote for a replacement of Beverly Hills Elementary School, nor did we vote for a $24 million new school. We voted for $11 million. At the end of the day, we live in a democracy, and in order to protect that democracy, we need to listen to the voters, and I'm confident that you'll do that. I'm also confident that if another bond were on the ballot for renovating the current Beverly Hills, Cabarrus County voters would support that in full. We are not asking for a $25 million brand-new school. We're not asking you to build every new school at 450 seats. We're asking you to understand that we want a renovation that will carry us through the next 30 or 40 years. The deferred maintenance budget that was given to us by Tim Lauter shows a $10 to $11 million spend over the next coming years to bring Beverly Hills up to code, replace the infrastructure, and bring the school up to current standards. At 408 seats, the current capacity of Beverly Hills, that cost per seat is $26,000. That's what we're asking for. The current new Royal Oaks Elementary School is $32,000 a seat. At simple math, if we're going to have seats in this county, we need new seats, we need new elementary school seats. It's the best use of taxpayer dollars to renovate a school if we can do it for less per seat than building a new school. This is what we want: our school, and our neighborhood, with our kids, and our backyard, and we're willing to use our tax dollars and our votes to get it. We've also asked for operational costs. We understand it's more feasible for you to operate one school versus two. We've yet to receive those operational costs. We were told that those can't be given to us because there's no operational cost for the new Royal Oaks Elementary School. I don't know what those cost savings are, but we talked about buses and less time on buses and more time on buses. We've been told that there's going to be the same amount of time on a bus. There's only one way to do that, and that's less students on a bus, which is more buses and more gas and more bus drivers, and that's more money. Has that been thought about? Has that been added to the equation? I think that this is something that we have to think about holistically, and this is not to disparage the larger schools. We support education across the whole Cabarrus County, and we acknowledge that larger elementary schools like Bogart and others certainly add value to our district. And however we feel about our school, it doesn't mean that we feel differently about other schools. But Beverly Hills and the houses and the businesses in the community that feed our district rely on that school in different ways than the larger schools, newer schools do, and I hope that you'll take that into consideration. They don't have to be mutually exclusive. We can have larger schools, we can have smaller neighborhood and community schools. Please vote against Scenario E. Please vote to keep Beverly Hills open. Thank you.
And I have the name written in here. Is it Branchia?
It's Branchia.
Branchet Chafont.
Conger may go first, please, and then I will speak for my daughter Claudine Chafont.
Okay.
Okay, you start, sweetheart.
Hi, my name is Conger Chafont. I am a 2nd grader at Beverly Hills Elementary School. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I want to highlight four reasons why you should vote to keep Beverly Hills open. First, our school has amazing teachers. I love going to class with my friends. If you close my school, I will miss my friends and lose my friendships. Second, it is great that my house is so close to school. I can get up, eat breakfast, and ride to my school in a couple of minutes. I don't want to go to school that is very far away. I don't want to wake up super early and sit in traffic on the way to school. I don't want to sit on busy Interstate 85 because I always see accidents and traffic jams. Third, my mom volunteers at Beverly Hills all the time. I love seeing my mom at school, and my friends always hug my mom. I like it when she does lunch duty to give teachers a break. If I have to go to school in Kannapolis, my mom will not be able to volunteer because she has to work and can't go to another town to volunteer. And fourth, since my school is small, I know where everything is, and every single teacher knows my name. They care about me and make sure I'm okay. If you close my school, where will my teachers go? Where will Principal Steele and Mr. Baden go? Please keep my school open. I love being a Beverly Hills Bulldog where we are respectful, responsible, and safe. Thank you.
Now, you stay right here with Paul.
Conger's mom is at work, so if your permission, I will read what she would like to say to you.
If you want to move the microphone just a little bit towards yourself.
Okay, okay, thanks. Dear Cabarrus County School Board of Education Members, My name is Claudine Chafont, and I am a proud parent of a Beverly Hills STEM Bulldog as well as an alumna of Beverly Hills. You have just listened to my son speak. His words derive directly from his heart. My son is one of 420-plus students whose future lies in your hands. You have the opportunity to allow these children to finish their elementary school years in the cherished, comfortable, convenient, and compassionate environment to which they are accustomed. You have the duty to prevent undue hardship that is simultaneous with uprooting children and dumping them into unfamiliar territory. Your choice can eliminate the inconvenience of depositing hundreds of children on busy highways and interstates that are more accident-prone than school administrators are willing to admit. You have the key to promote the positive welfare of students by opting to keep Beverly Hills open long enough for them to graduate in a few short years. By choosing otherwise, you play a role in the negative effects of hardship, inconvenience, and welfare that plague our community. Before closing any school, it is mandated by North Carolina General Statute Section 115-72A1 that a thorough study evaluating how closing a school affects the community and families within those boundaries. We have yet to see evidence of such a study. The super-secret committee meetings during the summer are not a valid excuse for ignoring the state-mandated public study. You will hear Deputy Superintendent Lynn Reimer point to the committee as a guiding light that just happened to shine its weary eye on Scenario E. 2017, Ms. Reimer told the Independent Tribune, "Scenario E minimizes neighborhood destruction." This logic ignores the Beverly Hills community because Ms. Reimer's recommendation performs the opposite task. It serves the student body at Beverly Hills, it severs, excuse me, the student body at Beverly Hills and dumped students into two geographically different positions. It once again uproots Kannapolis students who originally went to Royal Oaks and forces them to travel to other towns to attend elementary schools in Concord and Mount Pleasant. Scenario E doesn't minimize neighborhood disruption, it maximizes the Cabarrus County administration's preconceived decision to close our neighborhood school. Mount Pleasant parents and students also wanted to stay comfortably situated in their beloved school, and once they complained, the surprise notion of Scenario E popped up. Are the voices of Beverly Hill parents perhaps not as persuasive? My 7-year-old son said it best with the words, "Beverly Hill Bulldogs are responsible, respectful, and safe. You are responsible for my son's future and hundreds who share the season hall of Beverly Hills. Please be respectful and choose to keep our school open to allow these children to continue with the only elementary school they've known." The safest decision is to delay closing Beverly Hills until the Board is in compliance with several North Carolina general statute. We are Beverly Hills. You have the power to save our school. Thank you.
And this is Tammy Redmond?
Good evening, Board of Education. Apologize if my voice goes in and out, but I've got the local crud, but we'll continue on. Tonight, I return to emphasize the level of developmental and community disruption caused by the possible closing of Beverly Hills Elementary. As previously stated, a large percentage of our students currently attending Beverly Hills are low-income, utilize the free lunch program, come from marginalized populations, yet have achieved program outcomes that are above state and regional averages. That's something phenomenal you've got to say for our school. As a school, Beverly Hills has achieved a renaissance of educating students and who have become doctors, bioengineers, researchers, construction, project managers, members of our armed services, managers, teachers, parents, social workers, and, all in all, most importantly, parents. Generations of studies that have followed kids who have had schools, home-based schools that have closed, have shown that in the event this child is disrupted by a school closure, they move at least two to three times afterwards. That imposes a very big burden upon the parents of basically reestablishing a cornerstone for the family development, reconnecting with the community, and also basically kind of resetting the kid to let them know, "This new place is secure for you. This is a place you can learn. This is a place you can thrive." And I fear that if Beverly Hills is closed, we have a generation of professionals, families who are going to have to reset, and we cannot bestow that upon them. In the recent revised school boundaries map, there's a proposal of breaking up the student body at Beverly Hills and scattering them about to specific schools. I just have to ask, what's going to be the determining factors as to which kid's going to go to which school? It just seems very disruptive to the educational process. As good stewards of the community, your focus is not that of putting kids in as many seats as possible. Your mission is to comply with the tenets of Leonardo versus State. I provided a copy of this, a summer copy from Duke University School of Law for you to review. I know you've had a lot thrown at you tonight and over the past couple of months, but please consider what we've physically handed to you. This is research that shows disruption in schools by closure does not work. Cabarrus County has a rich history of pioneers that come from marginalized groups and have helped to shape our community and beyond. The students of Beverly Hills deserve just as much opportunity as any other kid in Cabarrus County. They deserve to have the natural support and community support for longevity. So as you vote, think about what foundation you're laying for the future of our community and what your vote means for the families of Beverly Hills Elementary. Thank you.
Yes. Hi, my name is Natalie Tucker, and I'm a Beverly Hills STEM parent. I'm very disheartened and disappointed in the recommendation of Scenario E. Using Scenario E as a redistricting plan disrupts 493 students to only add approximately 112 to 191 additional seats into Royal Oaks. It would eliminate a 400-seat STEM magnet school, which is one of the fastest-growing program-choice options in Cabarrus County. The redistricting of students from Royal Oaks to Irvin and from Beverly Hills to Wyancoph and leaving the 28 students at Mount Pleasant puts Irvin, Wyancoph, and Mount Pleasant at over 92% capacity. The additional districted students to Irvin limit available IB seats for the program choice. The additional districted seats at Wyancoph limit the number of available STEM seats for the BHA students who elected STEM. As a part of redistricting, 5th-grade students are normally allowed to stay at their current school. However, with Scenario E, BHA doesn't even have this choice. Students also have multiple transitions. Those who choose STEM will move from BHA to Wyancoph to Fries and then to Northwest, exposing themselves to multiple different communities and not having a feel of family. Non-STEM students will investigate STEM, fine arts, and IB as all multiple program choice. The Northwest community grew 150 students in one year, with projected growth by 2020 to reach capacity. At this time, there will be a need to redistrict the new high school, so I ask that you wait until this time to redistrict for growth in the Northwest area and alignment of elementary, middle, and high school. Royal Oaks could help alleviate some of this growth, but if Scenario E is chosen, they can't do that. I'm asking that you vote against Scenario E and against the closure of BHA. In the past, it has been important to CCS administration and the Board to keep communities together. However, Scenario E does not do this for Beverly Hills or for Royal Oaks. Beverly Hills is asking for the same courtesy as other communities and a right to their neighborhood school. Thank you.
And we have Suzanne Smith next?
Yes. Okay. Good evening. In October, I learned about the redistricting of Royal Oaks on the Nextdoor app. The project name is misleading because this seems to have never really been about the redistricting of Royal Oaks, and instead, a cover-up for the administration's desire to close Beverly Hills and eventually all downtown schools. When you close a school, redistricting is a natural outcome, but closing a school actually makes the decision before you momentous. You're no longer speaking to just parents and staff. You are now talking to the entire downtown community of Concord. Your decision now directly impacts the entire 28025 ZIP code as home values and tax revenues will decline. Are you prepared to make a decision that large? We aren't talking about 400 students any longer. Do you have all the facts that you need? You've all been supplied a copy of a white paper written by Michael Litten of Litten Consulting entitled, "Have All the Cost of Closing a School Been Considered?" In this paper, Mr. Litten talks about the indirect and community impacts of school closures. He mentions how schools are key indicators of community vitality and sustainability. Are you prepared to make a decision that will impact where people want to live, where people want to own businesses? Are you ready to make the decision to stunt the growth of our historic downtown? I would also like to comment on the TRIGO model of decision-making. While Ms. Reimer talks about the TRIGO method being virtually unbiased, every decision-making tool that requires human interaction is biased. Ms. Reimer and her team had to set up the variables. They had to rank those variables by what they felt was most important. Those numbered ranks are then computed into overall scores. Just because you apply a number to how you feel about a variable does not make credible Unless you have hard numbers, a new school costs $24 million, and an outfitted school costs $10 million, or tax revenue gains and tax revenue losses, TRIGO and any other decision-making process can be highly biased. Before making this decision, this decision that impacts every household and the 28025 ZIP code, that impacts tax revenue, that impacts the vitality of historic downtown Concord, I urge you to ask the tough questions, ask for hard numbers, talk to school systems who have closed schools and truly understand the impact, talk with Mr. Litten, who has studied school closures for over 20 years, and lastly, listen to your constituency. You may think we are acting purely on emotion, but we have been doing research. We've been consulting experts. We've been asking the tough questions. We ask and expect you to do the same. Thank you.
Just as a note, we will be taking a recess in about 15 minutes, so just from your notice on calling the next people out. Okay, now we have Hans Kegel?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Hans Kegel. I am currently a 7th-grade STEM student at JM Fries Middle School. I went to Beverly Hills STEM Elementary and Coltrane Webb STEM Elementary. I have enjoyed the STEM education I have received since 1st grade. Beverly Hills is a wonderful school, and you should not close it. First of all, it is a neighborhood school, and if it was closed, all of the kids who go there would have to go to Royal Oaks, which is in Kannapolis, a whole other city. It also needs to stay open because there are a lot of parents that have good relationships with the teachers, and that is very important in a school. Closing Beverly Hills would destroy many of these relationships. Although I do not currently attend Beverly Hills, I am enjoying a STEM education at JM Fries. I like STEM because it is a lot more hands-on learning, and many kids learn better hands-on because they can experience all of the things they are learning about, and the lesson gets implemented into their head. The students at Beverly Hills have STEM, and if they don't have Beverly Hills, they would have to go to Wyancoph to be able to continue with STEM. But if they went to Wyancoph, they wouldn't have a bus, which would make it very hard on the parents. If any school were to lose a STEM program, I think the kids would not learn as well. A lot of my friends learned better with A lot of my friends learned better with the STEM model. Many of my friends that now go to J.M. Freeze have to ride across the county to go to school. They have to catch the bus at the hub stop. If they had a neighborhood school like Beverly Hills, they would be able to ride, they would just be able to ride the bus from their house to school, and their parents would not have to drive them anywhere. Thank you for your time. I hope you understand why I think Beverly Hills should stay open. Thank you.
And now do we have Joe Hartzell? Oh, he switched down to Taz Kegels. Ms. Monroe, is that right?
Hello, my name is Michael Burpa. I am a 4th grade student at Beverly Hills, and this is my reasons why you should change your mind for closing down Beverly Hills. My first reason is the kindergartners. They're new to our school and are just learning about it, but now you're going to send them to a new, a way bigger school? That will cause a lot of fuss and confusion through the school. And a few years later, when they're finally used to Royal Oaks, they will probably have to move to another school, which will cause an outrage and a lot more confusion. My second reason is, some people say that our school doesn't have any growth. Well, we don't need a lot of growth because at our school, we know each other and we are a family. But too much growth can lead to confusion and not knowing where to go. My third and final reason is we love our school so much that when people found out that you were going to close it, a board member said, "Killing a school is killing a family," which shows you that one action can impact as many people as a community. Well, I hope you look at what we are saying and how it impacts our community and neighborhood. That is it.
My family has actively been involved in Cabarrus County Schools since its inception. My great-grandfather, Robert Lee Hartzell, was a traveling schoolteacher in the 1880s, later served on the school board from 1925 to 59. My grandfather, Harold, served for 14 years in the 80s and 90s. My grandmother, Martha, was a 46-year employee, and my Aunt Rosalynn taught half the adults in Cabarrus County. I come from a family that has built and supported this school system for over 125 years. Their love for education was passed to me. Before selling real estate for a living, I was a middle school teacher. I know how important a sense of community is to the success of a school, and now in my current profession, I know how important a school is to a community's success. You see, these things go hand in hand. The top decision of people with school-age kids when buying a home is school district. Closing Beverly Hills without question negatively affects the neighborhood. If you do not believe this, then feel free to take a trip to closed schools. Walk around schools like Logan or Long School or Bethel down in Midland. Walk around and see the condition, the values of the homes. While you're there, take a nostalgic moment and remember what it was like to go to a small school when you were a child. This is what buyers are wanting. They are fleeing the growth of Charlotte, the growth of Concord Mills areas, and the hopes to raise their family in the type of back-to-basic-style community Beverly Hills has to offer. The key to this lifestyle is a neighborhood school. Do not let filling seats and politics ruin this neighborhood like so many other schools across the nation. As a Realtor, I have personally seen the effects of the possible closing of Beverly Hills on the community. I have clients who are no longer looking for homes in Beverly Hills District because of this potential closure. And not only this, but they are not, they are extremely hesitant to purchase in the McAllister and Culture and Web districts. My heart goes out to the current homeowners in these areas. Voters, take note of the school board's demeanor while making this decision, how it's affecting your biggest financial investment. City of Concord, take note of the school board's decision, how it will affect your downtown revitalization plans. And county commissioners, take notes when you have a revaluation and you lose taxable values. I do not see how a downtown can continue to thrive without young families moving to the area. It's a basic economics. A reduction in property value will affect everyone's bottom line. The only reasonable solution in front of you is to table the Beverly Hills closure and return students to Royal Oaks. To spend the next year problem-solving with your community over the best route to take, revisit your tenure plan this next year and put community first. We are under no disillusion that something must happen with the current Beverly Hills building, but why so speedily? Why break promises to Royal Oaks parents when you told them they could return their new shiny school? Many are eager to return and are being informed that Amlet might go to Irvin. Before you vote, remind yourself of your mission statement when you say that you are a dedicated educational team in dynamic partnership with the entire community. Listen to your community. We stand here eager to help you with this decision. I will personally clear my calendar if you want my input from real estate. Partner with us and dedicate yourself to finding the solution for all involved. Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening. I'm Lindsay Hartzell, and I'm a mom to a kindergartner at Beverly Hills this year. I'm a born and raised Concordian, a badge that I wear proudly. And unlike my husband's family before me, Joe, my family does not have a long history with the school board and education in this county, but we do have just a long history in this county itself. My great-granddad worked in Gibson Mill, my granddad ran a wrecker business, my dad currently runs a crane business, and I also run a business in this area. So we are a family of entrepreneurs, and while that did not have us in the public servant life, this raising did serve me well when it comes to working hard, solving problems, and finding solutions. No good business or entity can survive without these common themes. I think this is where we've gotten a little lost. What started as a good thing, replacing Royal Oaks Elementary, has snowballed into closing a school that has solid footing in this community. Somewhere along the way, filling seats has taken the forefront to what is best for our community. Having just bought our third home in downtown Concord, I can say with certainty that our downtown is thriving more than it has at any other point in my lifetime. Our city officials and our downtown Concord development have done such a tremendous job in creating a culture that people want to be a part of, and community schools are the cornerstone to that culture. Homeowners have put blood, sweat, tears, and countless dollars in the homes, rehabbing them, keeping them strong for the next generation of families. And this is in a county where new construction is a dime a dozen, they choose to do this. Our sweet community schools pull in these young families, ones who are willing to put in the work to older homes, all just to be able to create a life in which they walk their kids to school, allowing more, for more than an hour a day of family time. It's not about not wanting to be somewhere else, it's about wanting to stay where we have planted ourselves intentionally. It's no secret that so goes the school, then so goes the neighborhood. I fear the board is truly underestimating the impact that quality community schools have on our community from an economic standpoint. The business owner in me is unable to put these thoughts on a shelf. While it does baffle me that I'd be allowed to start a kindergartner at a school that just not six weeks later would get notice of a possible closure, it bothers me just as much to know what impact this will have on the economics of our part of town. We, as downtown residents, have worked so hard putting on events, frequenting the restaurants. We spend so much of our money in this one square mile, and we have invited the rest of the county back in, and guess what? They're coming. They're coming to our events. If we, the young families, leave, who will do the inviting? Who will do the promoting? Who will do the work to keep downtown alive? But here's the thing, we're all human. This possible closure has taken on a life of its own. Maybe you saw this backlash coming, but maybe you didn't. Maybe all the points brought before you weren't necessarily the ones you considered when coming to the conclusion that Beverly Hills had to go. But there's always a chance to change. There's grace to say, "Hold on, we got ahead of ourselves." Royal Oaks will make it, and we'll be sure of that, and that piece of the puzzle will be figured out, but we can't do it on the backs of Beverly Hills. Being able, as a public servant, to say, "I hear you, I'm considering what you're saying, and you're making some very valid points," that is the type of board I want to partner with. You're seeing current community involvement at its core right now. We have mobilized, and we have united. I hope you will vote against the closure of Beverly Hills Elementary, not only for our children involved, but for its community impact as well. Thank you.
Two more. Two more to break. And Lynn Tekla?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening regarding the Royal Oaks boundaries situation. I have three children, aged 24, 21, and 17, all of whom attended Beverly Hills. We moved to Concord in 1996 and chose our home on Arbor Street in order to be close to Cabarrus Memorial Hospital, and to be able to send our kids to a school we'd heard wonderful things about through other physician families. We eventually moved in 2001, and we still relocated in the Beverly Hills District, even though flexibility had come to my husband's position. At the board meeting on November 20th, Dr. Chris Lauder said that, at the end of community feedback sessions this fall, that numerous people came up to him and said, quote, "When we look at the maps, we understand why you're making this recommendation. We get it. It makes sense. We just hope that you don't do it." It needn't be said that our family will mourn the day Beverly Hills closes if and when it does, but Dr. Lauder and the board need to realize that there are some, there are more than emotions that call for Beverly Hills to remain open. It's not that simple. In the Royal Oaks boundaries plan, Cabarrus County Schools cites 12 objectives it intends to address when determining the viability of redistricting options. On 11/20, Ms. Reimer presented Scenario E as the plan recommended to the board as being the best. I would encourage the board to more closely examine Option F, the one that simply keeps the students of all schools where they currently are. Let the dust settle, let the county continue to grow, and see where the future takes us. If that doesn't sound like an option, then let's look at the objectives that were set up before the committee and how the results actually stack up. Ms. Reimer said in the PowerPoint slide on 11/20 that Scenario E rises, quote, "above the others in best interest of all families, maximizing program-choice seats, use of logical boundaries, and minimizing neighborhood disruption." Ms. Reimer also said Scenario F, quote, "did very well minimizing collateral impact to other schools and minimizing neighborhood disruption, but fell short in meeting all other criteria." Let's look at some of that other criteria. Maximize the best interest of all students, and that was the number-one criteria in the list. Plan E will certainly not be in the best interest of Beverly Hills STEM students who aren't interested in a fine arts education, nor is it in the best interest of those students who will lose their neighborhood school, not to mention the other 486 will have to attend a different school. Maximize the responsible use of taxpayers' dollars. Taxpayers are smart. They understand that a growing county has growing financial needs, but they don't like being told one thing to get a referendum passed, voting for it, and then having the plans changed by a simple vote of a board to make a school replacement turn to an expansion of that school to 750 seats. And they certainly didn't vote to close Beverly Hills. Maximize the best interest of all families, not the ones being made to attend a different school. I'm going to skip a little bit because I have more to say. Maximize implementation of the Cabarrus County Schools' tenure plan. It is true that the closure of Beverly Hills is in the tenure plan, but I've been told, we've been told many, many times by the Cabarrus County Schools' administration that the tenure plan is a fluid document. We have all heard that. Blah, 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 blah. Please vote against Scenario E. I have more of what's already been said, and please save our school. Thank you.
I, uh, I'm a long resident of Beverly Hills. In 1951, my family moved there, and I went to first grade there. And Dr. Freeze was principal and helped teach the sixth grade. My experience was good, and the, our neighborhood opened their homes, the mothers opened their homes up to cook hot dogs on Wednesdays. The teachers really worked with the students. Even the Cavalier Lutheran Church opened their doors up for the PTO meetings. My mom was president. And then after I got married, our daughters went there. And with their experience, and with the good foundations, Angie grew up and went into the Army and has been in the banking for 20 years. And Tammy went to college, and this is an LCSW. I would, at Beverly Hills, kids are kids, not a number in a big school. I totally support and save our school and Beverly Hills remaining open. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you to all our speakers so far. At this time, we will take a five to 10-minute, let's go closer to the five-minute recess, and we'll return.